I call this work-study meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6:01 PM on August 17, 2023. For the record, the board members present are Sally Derrick, Tara Herbocic, Carolyn Benabides, Kim Brady, Eliana Garza-Rojas, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. We constitute quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Our next item is Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose and be placed in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. Ms. Canada, do we have anyone wishing to speak? No? Okay, with that, we'll move on to number three, our work-study discussion. Our work-study and discussion items. Our first item is 3A, our Team of Eight Training. And Ms. Kay Desgles with Tasby is going to facilitate that for us. And I'll just remind board members that you can leave the button red unless you want to speak, then you turn it on. And that's just a microphone. So you'll want to use that. We have one here, so we'll just have to monitor it. And with that, take it away.
I figured that. I like traffic lights.
So how did the start of school go? When'd you start? So it's been a whole week? Wow. And you all survived? I'm excited. So what does the board do at the start of school? Did y'all go to convocation? Y'all didn't have a prince impersonator, I guess. Okay, just, just... No, no, that's not good. That superintendent is leaving. I don't know what happened at... I don't know what the prince impersonator did, but I'm just telling you. No, this is a real thing. Yeah, it's a real thing. It's a district that starts with an L. But I can't say anymore because this is recorded. But, so if you were thinking about an Elvis impersonator for next year...
Don't do it.
Yeah, career-ending. Just saying.
We had students perform, and it was wonderful. And we also had a staff, student, jazz band, and choir.
Oh.
And it was amazing. I mean, I got chills that how all of our staff and students sang together.
That is amazing.
It was. And we gave away money. I mean, we had all the awesome things. Yeah, and very legal way.
Yes. Let me be real clear. That was legal. Yeah, just...
We're giving away money!
We're just throwing money around. Oh. Whoa. You weren't giving away cars like Oprah? Just, just... And so did y'all go to individual schools and go and smile and open car doors and...
They've been adopted. So they went to their adopted schools.
I always wanted to do that.
Yeah.
We haven't ever done it. But I'm not on the board anymore, so who cares?
Yeah.
Okay. So what do you want to brag about?
I think one of... We have a group of students from one of our high schools that worked collectively over the summer and designed an after-school STEM program for students. And they're going to pilot it at one of our elementary schools. And they've created the lesson plans, they've vetted it with the science department, and then the Ed Foundation funded it for them. And they're going to have like an eight-week little program for our elementary kids. These are juniors in our, one of our high schools.
That is amazing.
I was super excited.
Is it one of your adopted schools?
It is not.
Oh, good. I just wanted to say. I mean, not that it's good that it's not yours, but I just, I was impressed that you were talking about a school that was not your adopted school.
Yes, yes. Stepping out of the comfort zone.
You know, we started with STEM, and then we went to STEAM and added arts. And I was just at a district to the south of Houston that now has Stream. So just so y'all know...
That's the R.
I was going to ask you what you thought it was for.
Reading?
Nope. Nope.
Nope. Recession?
Nope. It's robotics. So it's science, technology, robotics, engineering, what's the rest of it? Arts and math. Yeah, so I just thought I'd share that in case y'all wanted to stream something later. I mean, I don't have any original ideas of my own. I don't. I just, I'm like a bee. I just go and collect something from this school district, and I share it with this school district, and I collect things. So I will be sharing what you told me about your juniors. Okay, what else are we excited about? No! Oh, that is pretty darn impressive. I'll be sharing that with somebody next week. Oh. Community aware that this is one of our schools.
Yes.
Yeah.
I like that. Exactly.
Every time I see one, I think of you.
Now, what did you...
Finally, yeah, yeah. That is pretty amazing. I'm trying to think of... What, I'm trying to think. Aransas County just changed their name because they got tired of being confused with Port Aransas and something else that sounded... Aransas Pass. And they just changed their name completely. So branding is important. Y'all didn't even have to change your name. So, what else? Not that that's not enough, but...
I think, oh, I'm sorry. The awesome attitude on the first day of school from all the staff. It, it's been really amazing to see that. The positiveness, like all the happiness to come back to school. It's a really beautiful thing to see.
And it's especially beautiful when we look at how many people are leaving the profession, how many districts did not start, you know, with, with every position filled and, yeah. So what do you think that caused that? Do you think it was the amazing convocation? Anyone can answer. I don't mean to...
I don't know. But I just know everyone was happy to be back in the schools and excited and smiling. I don't know if y'all had the same experience, but it was, it's just nice to see that.
Of course, I've also found that you get back what you project. So if you go around smiling, it's hard for people to look like they were weaned on a pickle. So that may have something to do with you too.
That's really true.
Yes. What else?
I'm excited about the new leadership that we've gotten, some new principals, a new special ed director, lots of new upper-level, upper-level administration. So it's just exciting to see that we're going to go in a different forward direction. And I'm excited about that.
Excellence attracts excellence.
Yeah.
Okay, what else? Not that that's not enough, I'm just...
Beautiful, yeah.
Yeah. What do they do on that field?
Football track.
Yeah.
Drill team, I recently learned.
Drill team.
Huntsville's building a new football st... Well, actually, not a new football stadium, a football stadium, like we never had one. We rented Sam Houston for an exorbitant amount of money. I didn't say that. For money. And we were excited because we were building our own, and now it's not ready. So guess where we have to play the first four games, you guys? At that lovely Sam Houston stadium. I'm a bear cat, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not trashing bear cats, no. I don't know why I think it's up there. It's just in case, you know?
It's a perfect...
You know, God, and everybody's listening. So I'm excited about your stadium with your sign. Yeah. What kind of sign?
It's a huge, very new stadium.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Now I'll have to drive around and find it. But anyway, of course, I'll probably be lost when I leave anyway, so that's not a big deal. Okay, what else? Couple more, and then we will move on.
I'd like to say that the nurturing of our teachers in Sam, the campus is just beautiful. I've seen several days crying and screaming, and the teachers just, they're still at their mom's.
Yeah. Yeah. I took my daughter to preschool, and when I picked her up that day, she said, "I cried for you." And I thought, oh, that is so cool. The next day, I picked her up, and I said, "Did you cry?" No, she, she said, "I cried for you," and she said, "And I cried for Jesus too." And I thought that was so sweet. And then the next day, I said, "Did you cry for me?" She said, "No, I just cried for Jesus today." So, yeah. She's 35 now. She's survived. But, okay. So how long have you been here, Dr. Eldridge?
And since March.
Okay. So how many months is that? I'm sorry, I don't do math. Five. So we're about at the halfway part mark. And what I always tell boards is that when you bring in a new superintendent, whether they're from internal or external, you need to give them about six months to get the lay of the land, just to figure out what the assets are, they figure out what the challenges are, whether that's finances or facilities or, or folks. And at the end of that time, then your superintendent needs to give you what their plan is. Now, I know you are like a superstar, and you came in with a plan. You're like, these are the things I'm going to do. But you know, what's interesting is personnel-wise, have you ever seen folks that, that you just didn't think did a whole lot? And I don't call any names or anything, we're, we're just recorded. But when someone new comes in, that person gives something you didn't know they had. So I know you've had some of those aha moments, and you've also had moments of people who were excellent for another district. So let's talk about what it is you want Dr. Eldridge to focus on. Because she's been here long enough to kind of get the folks and the people and start school and all of that, even though we don't know funding because we're still having a special session, and it's, God bless you for coming in during a legislative year, like the oddest legislative year we've ever had. But, so...
So we're saying it out loud? You want that included in our evaluation?
Um, well, you're going to do an evaluation, but just, when are you doing an evaluation?
December.
So, yeah, we're, we're not there yet. So what, but, but kind of, what do you want to see? This is, you know, when you do evaluations, the, the commissioner said you have to do a summative, which is what we all think of when we think of evaluation, that, that once a year. But the commissioner also says that you have to have at least one formative evaluation. So that's the summative where you're doing an instrument, and you fill it all out, and you all turn it in and all of that. But you also have to do at least one formative. And a formative doesn't involve anything in writing, it's a conversation. And it's usually not done in an open session, but I know she's amazing, and we're going to talk about some stuff that we're going to be looking for. But you also, I think, really successful teams do more than the one required formative. You know, maybe you do it every three months, you know, because if you, if you do a summative at the end of the year, then maybe you would do the formative like mid-year. But every three months, just a check-in, it's just a conversation. It's not a gotcha, it's not a, here's my scroll of all the things that I've heard that are wrong. It's where do you think we are? You know, what are the things we need to know more about? Here are the things that we think are amazing, because part of evaluation is saying, these are the things that we think are great. Sometimes we take it for granted that our person knows the amazing things they're doing. And if you don't say, "We love that," they may go, you know, "I haven't spent a lot of time on that." Maybe nobody cares. So it's a chance to say, "Here are the things that we think are great, and here are the things we have questions about." And then, in addition to the formative and the summative, the commissioner requires that you have a, a goal setting. So after you do the one in December, then probably the next month, you need to set actual goals. You need to say, based upon, you know, where we are in December, here, here are the things that we want to set for next year. Because you don't want to, you want it to be objective. You don't want it to be subjective. And a lot of times, I've seen boards, including the one that I was on for 16 years, that would kind of go, eh, do we like him? Do we not like him? Did we win football? You know, have there been any scandals? And that's not objective. That's not based, you want to have a superintendent evaluation that's based on objective things. Here are the things that we asked you to do, here are the things you've done, and how did that go? You don't want it to be based on, on, you know, what they said at 7-Eleven or Dairy Queen. That, that is anecdotal. That's not, that's not data, that's anecdata. But we want it to be on data, and we want it to be focused on student achievement. Because even the legislature figured out that that's really why we're here. So just, and, and, and just so you know, I always tell new board, boards with new superintendents that pretty much that first evaluation is, like I said, going to be the plan. She's going to bring you a plan for whatever the things y'all are, think are important, for personnel, for finances, for facilities. What do we need to be looking to the future for? And so basically, that, that first evaluation is, did she bring us a plan? You go? Yep. I'm assuming she will, because I'm sure she's already done it. But then the next one is, what do we do? Based on that plan, what's, what are our next goals? So what are the things that, as we sit here in August, knowing that in December, we're going to walk through an evaluation, what are the things, what are your priorities? What's important to you? And I don't mean to stare at you. I don't mean to make eye contact.
Yeah, it's okay. Let me, let me start. I, I feel like something that she has brought to us that we were lacking is her genuine desire to build relationship with staff, with community, and whatever. And so she is moving in the direction of partnering and collaborating with all facets of the community. And I'm not sure that we had that as much in her predecessor. He served us well as an interim. But he really filled the role as an interim because of how long and the various pieces. But it's one of the reasons for the positive start, I believe, is because she is working hard to build relationships.
Yes.
And not only on the outside, but inside, that's important to me, to continue building relationships.
Oh, okay. I, I, I thought we were like internal to the body. I was like, well, what relationships is like the gallbladder talking to the liver? You know? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little slow sometimes, but I hear what you're saying, internal to the district and external. So what relationships is she building externally?
I think she's just present, and our staff loves it. You know, she's very approachable, and that's important to me, that they're not scared, oh my God, here comes, you know...
Yeah, what's she checking on?
Right, yeah. So that, having that flow of relationship and, I think, two-way street.
Yeah.
And it really does, I think, really pressure and stresses on our staff.
Y'all have stress. And here, y'all have stress? Wow. Yeah, this has been more stressful than I've ever seen education, so that's very important.
No, I think Wendy's done a great job building a positive culture within our buildings and within our community. And that is so important. But one of the things I would like us to consider as one of her goals, I guess, is to raise our reading scores tremendously.
You, you're concerned about student outcomes?
Yes, ma'am.
You are just a hard taskmaster woman.
Particularly reading. I mean, I'm sure math needs help too, but the reading is the key to success in the future. So we have got, they've got to be able to read when they leave.
Well, and they say you learn to read, so you can read to learn.
Exactly right.
And even our math problems have reading.
Mostly reading, yes.
Yeah.
But reading is mine, is the top concern. That, well, that and special education.
Well, and developing a love of reading.
Absolutely.
Because I don't want kids to just read because they have to. I want them to find things that they want to know more about. So, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. And there are districts that have done that really successfully. I mean, down to going door-to-door, or asking people, if you live here and you're sending your kid somewhere else, why? You know, because nine times out of 10, it's because that parent thinks there's something else in that other district that y'all don't have. And it gives you a chance to say, oh, well, did you know? And did you know? And Montgomery ISD did a whole did you know campaign. And theirs was less about academics and more about their funding, because they are one of the districts that lost money when we redid funding, and there are several districts around the state. So one of the things they did was just a did you know? And you can do that for anything, because you assume that every parent knows everything that you offer. And trust me, if it does not directly affect their kid, and sometimes if it does directly affect their kid, they just don't know. You know, one of the things we don't tell our story well enough, you know, President George H.W. Bush said his mama taught him, like most of our mothers did, not to brag. So we don't, we don't brag on ourselves, but you have got to brag on your district. If you don't tell your story, someone else is going to tell your story. Yeah. Because they don't take everybody. So they want... Yeah. But you got to get in front of them. And you got to do it in every possible way you can think of. Those lovely sign boards are a great way to spread the amazing things. Yeah. Exactly. Exactly. So, but, and one of the things you said is she's building partnerships, and she's going out into the community. So my question for you, which is a little off-topic, but not really, because I'm an ooh shiny kind of person, you know, just in the middle, ooh shiny, but I'll come back. But what have you as board members done to help her build those relationships? And I'm not going to look this way, Randy, because you'll think I'm talking to you, and I'm not. I'm just going to look down, and whoever wants to talk can talk.
Well, when we're in public together, I introduce her to everyone I know.
Okay, that's a good start.
And we're delighted because she's approachable, and that's okay. You know, it's, hey, I love it. People love it in our community.
I think every community likes it when someone new comes in and you come and say, "Here's my new friend." Yeah, okay.
But it means more when this is my new friend.
Yeah. When it's genuine.
Yes.
Okay, what else? I'm not going to make eye contact.
Speaking very positively about her, even when she's not around.
Especially when she's not around. Because she'll get the big head if you do it while she's listening.
Following that up, but then she's really excited to be here, you know? And we're really excited to have her. So our positive attitudes in the community make a huge difference.
Yes, it does.
That we're confident in our decision, and she's going to do good things for us and as a team. But that helps a ton. Because that's what a lot of these people are basing their charter school days on, is what they hear in the community. So, I was speaking to a parent the other day, and he was, he was at a charter school. And he said to me, well, you know, there's one thing I do want my kids to learn before they graduate. And I'm, well, what's that? I want them to learn how to do welding and plumbing. And I said, well, you should come to CFB, because we've got those.
Did you know?
Did you know? And they even get like a certification in the apprenticeship. So they'd be one step ahead of all the other kids who got that.
For free.
For free. And I said, and he's like, really? Oh, yeah. I said, you should come to check us out. If you have any questions, you know, let me know. But, you know, we're open, you can come tomorrow. So just saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, but they're basing their decisions on charter schools from things that they hear in the community.
Yeah. Because they send out brochures.
Yeah, oh, tons of marketing, yeah. Tons and tons.
In our last SLI, I went to the communication, one of the very last, and they said that charter schools spend $20 million on advertising, and public schools spend 1.5.
Because we're accountable for those funds, and we want them in the classroom. That doesn't count how much they spend on lobbying. But you didn't hear that here. Okay, what else are you doing to help Dr. Eldridge be...
When in the community, when somebody says, well, can I get information about that? Or can I learn more about that? Or can I make the connection to her? And then if there's an event, like Rotary at one point said, hey, can y'all come? And so I went with her, went to Rotary together.
Yes.
To really bridge the connection, like what you said, like introducing everybody, but also making sure, if somebody's asking a question, they're put in, in place with her so that they can make the connection. Which I made, it's a more input form now. We did a board input form.
Oh.
Where if you have a comment, question, information about the form, and it goes directly to spreadsheet to her, and she's reviewing it, and they do, so it's a one-stop shop.
Yes.
So it's not getting text messages, emails, phone calls, everything goes in that list, and it's tracked. And for follow-up. And then in our meeting, we review it to make sure that if there's any questions about it, we can get back to the board members, or we can talk about what it is. So I think that helps this community, things are being put up now.
Yes. And it gives you something to do with that information, because everywhere you go, somebody's going to tell you something, and if you go, oh, let me write that down. But if you can, if you can obviously just put it in one place, that's pretty cool. I will be sprinkling that on other districts, just so you know. Oh, please! Oh, please! Why reinvent the wheel? Why do we always try to reinvent the wheel? Now, sometimes when you get the wheel, you go, well, you know, in our town, it would work better this way, or it would look better that way. So you always want to tailor it to what you need, but let's not start everything from scratch. Because the same things you're trying to do here, they're trying to do in other places.
And I think that has a lot to do with competition, not collaboration. Because I think COVID has brought that down a lot.
Yeah. We always needed each other, it just highlighted it for us. Yeah, you can compete on the athletic fields and in UIL, but in terms of, these are all our kids. These five and a half million kids are all our kids. You know, you don't want to push the Huntsville kids down just so y'all can be taller, of course. Don't push us down anyway, because that's not nice. But, okay, what else? What else are you doing to help Dr. Eldridge be successful?
Checking in on her, see how she's doing.
Yeah. Because you know, hiring a superintendent is kind of like speed dating. You know, you date, and you know, when you interview them, you know, they tell you stuff, but not everything, and you tell them stuff, but not everything. And then when you actually marry them, then you're, the uglies come out, and they're kind of like, ah, so you got to make sure she knows, we're still here. Yeah, we, 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 we meant to tell you about that, or we didn't know about that, or we would have told you. And same thing. So that's important. Because that's a stressful job. And as stressful as being a school board member is, it's your hobby. This is like her real life. So it's important that we not stress her out. What else? And then we will move on. Okay, back to what are the priorities? So I have partnering for a positive culture, student outcomes, reading and special ed. We want to take care of enrollment and recapture those people who are gone. And we also want to get the legislature to fund based on enrollment, not ADA. Because if my kid doesn't come to school, you still need a teacher in that classroom. It's not like you can say, okay, this kid didn't come, you know, you can go home. So, you know, staying on top of it, even though the, the legislative session has been kind of wonky and kind of protracted and just kind of, we still need to... we still need to keep that as a priority. What else?
Connected to enrollment of the attendance.
Yes.
So, I think maybe be more focused on getting them here and keeping them there, and then also the day-to-day attendance. Like, we need them in the classroom. So, when you said, did you know, like, did you know that it impacts when your kid isn't here? Not just funding, but your actual child's academic success, emotional success, extrapricular success is all impacted when your kid's not at school.
Yeah.
And we see the decline in attendance. And so, it's really important that they're in the classroom, like every day they need to be.
And even for the littles, you know, as a parent, you're kinda like, oh, you know, they're not really doing anything. They're just learning how to nap today. That's not the case. And if you're one, if your baby is one of those that's crying and laying in the floor, not having that every day, that routine messes that up. But also, I saw a meme, because all my important stuff comes from Facebook, and it just said, you know, if your child misses one day a month, this is how many days they end up missing, or two days a month, or three days a month, because we're, I mean, we're parents. We're like, oh, precious, you don't feel like going? My mother was a nurse. It had to be coming out of both ends for us to not go to school. I mean, both at the same time. So, you know, things have changed a little, and parents aren't as strict as my mother was, because she had to work. She had six kids. You can't be just, yeah, anyway. This is therapeutic. But, yeah, so we wanna focus on attendance, not just for that. And the other thing we wanna focus on is how do we keep kids in the classroom? So, we absolutely want discipline, and we want kids to be attentive, and we want them to be respectful, and all of those things. But every time they end up not being in the classroom, it affects the same way. You know, so, and one of the things that, I'm reading a book, and mind you, I only do audiobooks, so I'm being read to. It's called The Body Keep Score, and what it talks about is trauma, and how trauma affects adults, kids. So, so a lot of times, those kids who are disciplined problems, instead of asking what's wrong with you, we need to be asking what happened to you. And we need to figure out how to, to, to deal with that trauma and how to keep them in a classroom safely. Not just return them there, because this is, you know, we don't wanna disrupt other kids' learning, but we do want to try to, try to get to what the problem is. So, yeah, we want, we want them attending, and we want them in the classroom, in the appropriate, in an appropriate classroom where they're, they're learning. What else?
Supporting our staff. It's a very general statement, and I think we can get more specific on it, but we have to support our staff. Or we do the work in the classroom.
We have to take care of the people who take care of the kids. And not take them for granted, not assume that because we pay them those exorbitant salaries, that they should just be happy to be there. Yeah, and that's, that's so important. It is, and it's not just at convocation time, and it's not just, you know, it's all the time. How do we make them feel that they're appreciated? And the other thing is, how do we get parents to show that appreciation? Because, and not just at the end of the year, you know, with the, with the nice teacher gift. They get like three thousand of the same thing. But how do we help parents understand how important teachers are, how important bus drivers are, custodians, everybody to their kids? When we talk about partnerships, they're the partnership.
PTA helps a lot.
Yes, PTA does help.
But the schools that aren't supported, yes, they need to.
You know this is being recorded. They can't hear a word you're saying, ma'am. You're whispering.
Oh, I don't need to. The PTA does great things for our district. And for those schools that are not supported, we need to engage them. We need to engage the community.
Yeah, and we also need to engage those parents who can't come to PTO, PTA, PTSO. I mean, they didn't have all those letters when I was a kid, but I think my mother just had a pipeline to my teachers. Of course, my third grade teacher was in love with it, but that's a whole other story. Anyway, but yeah, how do we, how do we support those folks that support our kids? And not just teachers, but also administrators. You know, we kinda take them for granted. They're not necessarily on the front lines, but they are absolutely. Everybody in this whole hierarchy needs to be supported. Parents, community. Cause the more we support them, the more they support us. Okay, what else? Okay, if you don't bring it up today, you can't bring it up in December. This is, this is kinda, this is a chance to spit it out there.
Well, there's gotta be efficient financial operations for effective outcomes.
Oh, I like that.
We're accountable to the taxpayers. It's a key priority.
Yeah, efficient means you do it right. Effective means you do the right thing. I like that, and I love alliteration. But yeah, and it's gonna become more challenging. You know, the, at this point, we didn't get any state-approved raises. And at this point, we're not even keeping up with inflation. So, every single dollar counts. You know, and, and I try to explain to public that eighty-some percent of your budget is personnel. So, the people who think that there's fraud and waste and abuse, there just ain't much to fraud or waste or abuse. So, being able to, to do that is amazing, and it has to be done. Okay, what else? I mean, these are all great things.
Well, on top of what Tara just said about streamlining our programs, you know, I feel like there's like, we bought this, and we bought this, and we bought this, and we bought this, and it's like, are we actually using any of that? To have the data to support the financial decisions that we're making, and if we're not using it, let's get rid of it. That kinda thing.
Yeah, and staff feels like we go with the flavor of the month. It's like, oh, we need this. No, wait, this is even better. No, wait, we're gonna do this. And you end up with a district where you're doing all of them.
Right.
Someplace, but you have to have that alignment and, and the buy-in from the staff, because they're just sick of, oh, here we go, here's another one. Wait, here's the smart boards. No, wait, here's the white boards. No, here's the, and how do we get something that is being used and is, is, is helpful?
Maybe we need data on it to sort of challenge us.
Data? Real data? Not-
Find by.
Not just anecdata? Oh, my goodness.
Or renewing to renew.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or changing for change's sake.
Right. We need the data to support that.
Now, you're telling her that she needs to do all this. What are you gonna do when you get pushback from staff? Who say, she's changing everything. I just knew she was gonna change everything. Or community, what is that woman y'all hired doing? Your response will determine how successful she is. Because if you say, I don't know, I don't know what she's doing. What is she doing? Wait, let me look on Facebook. What is she doing? You know, it's, it's on X. Now, it's not even Twitter. It's, it's X. Let me see. You know, or if you say, she's doing exactly what we asked her to do, and I know change is uncomfortable, but we want excellence. We want the best for our kids. We want the best for our community. We want the best for our staff, and here's how you can help. But every one of you has to embrace that. Because if there's any crack, you know, like, not that kinda crack, but any crack, you know, any, any, any division, people will seize on it. Now, you know, what, last time I was here, I think I did the Governance Core, right? And the last slide, does anybody remember what my last slide before my contact information was? Do you remember what was on the last slide?
I looked back at my notes.
And here, I thought I'd done so well. It was a photo. It was a sporting thing. They were engaged in, I'm just gonna wait and see. Don't we have any visual people here? You don't see that lovely slide? Yeah. You can, you can answer. You can answer. Not the fence.
Not the fence, but the arena.
Ew, there was no arena.
It wasn't there?
It wasn't there somewhere. It was something, maybe that was at the beginning.
Rowing? Do y'all remember rowing? The Sward of Crew?
Yes.
Remember when I told you that in the Sward of Crew, every, y'all, I was in Vermont, and I didn't have to explain to them the Sward of Crew. I just loved it. But, of course, they did get flooded recently. All rowing at the same time. Well, I so love that analogy. And then I was in, where was I yesterday? This is so sad. Lovejoy. I was in Lovejoy, and they took it to the next level. They said, in rowing, you know, everybody's rowing the boat in the same direction for success. They said, what would you do if someone jumped in your boat and started poking holes in it? Besides sink. So, you all have to make sure while you're rowing, you don't let other folks poke holes in the boat. And God forbid, you should poke holes in the boat. Is that not excellent?
That's excellent. I'm writing that down.
I know, I wrote it down. I was just like, well, you go. So, I have to change my slide. I have to add that to my slide after that. But that's the other thing, that you have to make sure that nobody else pokes holes in your boat. But you also gotta make sure that none of you poke holes in the boat. You know, and if you're like me, you could just fling your arm back and accidentally poke a hole in the boat. So, we don't wanna have that, but we definitely don't wanna have the deliberate. I have, I taught, I, I devised a course called Take This Job and Love It, and it's for burned-out board members. Actually, it's for burned-out anybody. It applies to everybody. But it talks about the cycle. You go from being like wonderfully excited, because everything's brand-new. This is the honeymoon period, and everything's great, and everybody's excited, and all this. And then you go to frustration, because you're like, oh, wait a minute. I didn't think it was all this. You know, I didn't know that. And you know how when you're in the audience, you know all the answers? Or if you're, you know, the, the person who's not driving, you can tell them how they need to be driving, like you're just holding the wheel, and they think they're really driving? Well, when you're not on the board, you think, well, well, that's stupid. They oughta just do this. And why don't they just do that? And then you get over here, and you go, wait a minute. Not only do I not know all the answers, I didn't even know all the questions. And then you get frustrated, and then you go into denial. I didn't wanna be on the board anyway. I don't know why we were doing this anyway. You know, I, I- And then we have a stage that's either Paul, I mean, it's either Peter or Job. You know, Job is the one that goes, well, you know, naked I came into the world, naked I go back into the world, yay, though he slay me. That's me. I'm, I'm Job. But then there's also Peters, who, who pull out their sword and wanna cut off people's ears. So, you either, you either, you get angry or you get complacent. But then if you hang on, you get back to recommitment. So, the, and one of the things that I emphasize in that is, everybody's not at the same stage at the same time. Cause you get brand-new board members, and they're like, oh, oh, this is great. Oh, my God, we're on board. And you have burned-out board members who are like, sit down and shut up. You know, there he goes, asking another question. There she goes. Lord, she doesn't understand anything. But just understand that people are at different stages, and it's annoying when you're all excited and somebody's burned out, or vice versa. But every one of you, if you can hold on and you work together, you get back to recommitment. So, one of the things I'm gonna ask y'all to do is agree to hold each other mutually accountable. And I don't mind holding Sally accountable, but Lord, don't let her try to hold me accountable. Who does she think she is? I've been on the board for, you know, ten minutes. I know some stuff. You know, but, but that's, successful teams do that. Because for years, we have sent professional athletes to the Olympics in basketball. And we always knew that we were going to win the gold. I mean, it was, it was a foregone conclusion. I don't even know why those people, other people came out there, because we were gonna win. Cause we had superstars. Do y'all remember the year where we didn't win? We had like really highly-paid superstars, and they didn't win. Why do you think that was?
They weren't working as a team.
They weren't working as a team. I don't care what superstars you are, or what superstars you bring into your, onto your team. If you don't work together as a team, it doesn't work. And one of those stages of, of the life cycle is where you just start saying, you know, if it wasn't for him, we'd be doing this. If it wasn't for her, if it wasn't for them. And you blame everybody else. But it's important in any situation to say, what am I bringing to this? Remember when Brad Pitt and what's-her-name broke up?
Angelina. Angelina.
No, before her.
Jennifer Aniston.
Yes, Jennifer Aniston just broke up. Poof, gone. Yes, I know this is recorded, but everybody knows they broke up. It's not a secret. But what she said, and I loved it, she said, in any relationship, anything that fails, she tries to figure out, what did I contribute to that? Cause it's so easy to point fingers and go, yeah, and they did this. But it's harder to be reflective and say, how could I have done that differently? But if the eight of you don't model that, then you can't expect staff to do it. And if the eight of you don't model that, you can't expect students to do it. And if the eight of you don't model that, you can't expect the community to. So, you think they don't know, and they don't watch? They watch. They know. They put you on X and Facebook and Snapchat and TikTok and all those things. But I'm gonna ask you just to start holding each other accountable and to agree to let other people hold you accountable. Because if I said something really crazy, I would expect y'all to say, you know, at least give me the one, you know, one raised eyebrow, like, what? But, but just give me the high sign. You know how, if you have like a piece of spinach in your tooth, and you've been with people all day, and you've been smiling, the biggest smile you can imagine, and you go to the bathroom, you look in the mirror, and you're like, oh, my God. Cause Andrea did not even mention that I had this big piece of green stuff in my mouth. You know, but you have to say, if I see spinach in your teeth, I'm gonna tell you, because I love you. I want you to, to not be walking around with spinach in your teeth. You know, but that's what we have to do for each other. And I'm, I'm being facetious about the spinach, not really, though, but sometimes we gotta have uncomfortable conversations. And I want y'all to, I'm not gonna ask you to sign a pledge or anything, but I want you to think about, how do we do that? How do we resolve when you think I've done something I shouldn't have, or said something in a way I shouldn't have? Because, and that's, Cecilia taught us this, ouch and share. If somebody stepped on your foot, you'd say ouch. But if you don't share with them that they stepped on your foot, because they may not know. I mean, I'm always amazed. You know, if, if my foot's under yours, I'm like telling my grandson, surely you felt that was my foot under there, but sometimes they don't. So, it's important as a team, as a family, cause family, you don't get to pick your family members. You just wake up one day, and they're there, or they married somebody, and they're there. That's kinda like what a school board is, that you've gotta be willing to say to me, Kay, you, you stepped on my foot. Or when you said such-and-such in the meeting, I don't know how you meant it, but this is how it felt to me. Because if you don't tell me that, I may do that to everybody else, because I don't know that was offensive, that I don't know that I did something. So, I need for y'all, in the spirit of superintendent evaluation, in the spirit of self-evaluation, to work on that. I mean, it's not easy. It's, it's much, much easier to say it than to do it.
I think to show each other grace and compassion and empathy, because we all come from different walks of life, and not everybody may understand your walk of life.
Yeah, I only know what I know. I have not lived in your life. I don't know the things. You know, we did a poverty simulation. I don't know. I think everything happened three days, three weeks, or three, three years ago, but I think it was three years ago. And one of the things that struck me every time I, I do this is, I grew up poor. So, I assume that everybody's poverty is like my poverty. You know, I cried when I realized there were people that didn't have books in their home. I mean, we didn't have anything fancy, but we always had books. So, it's, you know, your experience is different than mine. So it's, you know, your experience is different than mine. We did that, um, Challenge Day. Have y'all ever done that? Do y'all do that here? Oh, it's so cool. It's a guy called Flip Flippin', which is hilarious. And it's cap... It's, well, it's part of capturing kids' hearts. And you do this thing called Challenge Day, and you may have seen it on a show where they'll say, "If, um, you have siblings, cross the line." So everybody who has siblings goes across. Or, you know, "If you were an only child, go over here", and everybody who didn't. And they did one where they said, "If you've been a child, if you were a child, cross the line." And I thought, "Oh, this is a gimmick, they just think that's funny", until we all got over here and there were like three people over here who were like, "I didn't have a childhood." I mean, if you look at Michael Jackson, he says, "I never had a childhood." I mean, that's why Neverland was a big deal, but anyway, we won't talk about that either. But... So, you just assume, and there was a... At the end of the day, we kind of sit in groups. And one of the girls in my group was from an affluent part of Huntsville. And she said, "My parents have never told me they loved me", and I went, you know, you don't, your face doesn't want to go, "What?!" And you're like, "Oh, my god!" So we assume that the way we live, the way we were raised, the way we parent, everybody does it the same way. And you're right. We gotta have some grace. Because I'm only doing what I know to do, and I don't know that it offends other folks. So that's, yeah. And one of the nice things was, when COVID hit, I heard districts say, "Grace before grades." You know, we were, we were giving that grace. And now, as we get back to whatever normal is, we don't. So, yeah. So other thoughts about how we do that?
I just think the stakes are too high. Like, anytime that we are out of line, um, worrying about things that shouldn't be the main thing, the stakes are too high.
Yeah.
I think that needs to be our, like, you know, guiding light is just to remember, we are all in this for one thing. So when there's distractions or whatever we're dealing with, whatever it's possible, there's some stakes are too high to handle.
Yeah.
We're trying to be distracted right now. There are too many kids coming on.
Every time you graduate a kid, you affect generations. Every time a kid doesn't graduate, you affect generations. And, you know, when you think, "Well, okay, that person may not be right in that position, but we'll just ride the year out", that's a year out of kids learning. So you're absolutely right. And, you know, we all know boards that are in the news. It's a distraction. Because when the spotlight's on the board, rather than on the kids, then we've got the wrong focus. You're right, because the stakes are too high. And I will jokingly tell you that I tell boards, you know, "Be as dysfunctional as you like, dysfunction is job security for me, just go ahead, be as crazy as you want." But, I don't really mean that. Because I want the focus in every district to be on student outcomes. And when I say that, I don't mean star, I don't mean end of course, I don't mean those official, um, measures. I mean, what are you doing to improve the lives of kids? You know, what are we doing to improve the mental health of staff and students and community? What are we doing? Tho- those stakes are too high, because sometimes they are literally life and death. So what else? What else can we think about as we talk about being that amazing honor board? And you know what? I have to tell you, I am really excited because there are two boards that are in the final five that I coach. I'm sure it's because of me. But, the cool thing is, if you have been on the board for a while and you've gone to convention and you've seen the honor board selected and you hear them speak, so many times they say, "If you looked at us five years ago, you would never have thought we'd be here. If you looked at us three years ago, you would never have thought we'd be here." So, when you look at dysfunction, change is hard. And sometimes change brings us to a place of conflict. But what I had to learn when I took mediation training is, conflict is not bad. It's first of all, normal, natural, gonna happen. And the question is, how do we deal with it? How do we agree to deal with conflict? Because, I mean, if you've got a sibling, you understand conflict. If you have a spouse, you understand conflict. If you're a supervisor, I love the alliteration, you, you're going to have conflict. And what's that, what's the thing where they go, Stormin', Norman, Foreman, whatever? Yeah, but the storming precedes that. So, conflict is not bad, it is necessary, but what we need to figure out is, how do we deal with that? Okay, what else?
Well, I think also just not taking it personally. Like, because we're all from different perspectives, we all have different thoughts, and we do hold each other mutually accountable. It's not about the person. It's about perspectives and also just understanding that we all come at it from different lens. And so therefore, um, the stakes are high. And so because we're looking at it, we all have different perceptions in this room, we all have different backgrounds in this room, but we can't take it personal when somebody comes to talk to you about something that they're concerned about.
I love it when people say can't. Because they always tell me, "Oh, you can't, you can't miss it." I can miss anything. "Oh, you, you, you can't get lost." I was at my friend's house, she gave me directions to the bathroom, I ended up in the closet. Okay, so can is a very strong word. We should not, we will strive not to, but I'm human. And, I was in the elevator on the cruise and a woman said, "Well, I'm not a Karen. Not when I'm not, not, not unless I'm sober." And I said, "Honey, we can all go from zero to Karen in sixty seconds, given the right thing." So, I'm not asking you to be superhuman. I am not asking you to not have emotions. What I am asking you to do is what we ask kids to do, to self-regulate. You know, because, um... Today is my oldest son's birthday. He passed away earlier this year, so this is our first birthday without him. And I knew that this day would be difficult. So I did things to prepare myself for this day. Because I worked in Lovejoy yesterday, so I spent the night here. So, I called the front desk and said, "What's the latest checkout you can give me?", they said noon, I was like, "Hmm." Um, I said, "Thank you", he goes, "Well, maybe I can give you one", I said, "That's perfect." So I went downstairs, it was Holiday Inn Express, and I got a breakfast and I brought it back to my room. Because I know how to pamper me. And I have this group of people that I talk to. And I called up the Holocaust, well, I didn't call up, I went online and, and bought a ticket to the Holocaust Museum. Because I wanted to go. So I knew all the things to do to regulate my emotions today. So I'm going to ask all of us, whether it's here or at home or on your, your, your real job, or whatever else you do, know yourself. Know what your triggers are, know when something is coming up that will be, um, that could be difficult for you. And we all have those things. But just, don't take it out on anybody else. And that's hard sometimes. And also, as you said, recognize that somebody may be going through something. I mean, everybody you meet is fighting some battle you know nothing about. Because I can remember years ago, I was at SLI and I had a coworker that I didn't like a whole lot. I mean, you know how we sort of judge people and prejudge them and, you know... Well, I know y'all don't know, but sometimes I have bad thoughts about people. And we were sitting at lunch, and, I mean, dinner. And I'm always thinking, "Why am I here, I don't even like her", and she started telling me a story about her family. And I was like, "Oh, my god! You know, she's a real person, she has real problems." And here's the crazy part, I probably shouldn't say this on a recording, but she was saying that her son had gotten a DUI. And I thought, "Oh, that's terrible", and by the end of the thing, I'm hanging on the table because I'm just, you know, she's now my best bud, because I know something about her outside of work. Well, dad gum, if my son wasn't getting a DUI as we were having that conversation! It was a Friday and his dad died on Sunday. You know, the more we know about somebody and the more grace we give them, then the easier it becomes to work with them. You don't have to be best friends. You don't even have to like each other. I mean, don't do the voodoo doll thing, I told you about that, right? Yeah, don't, don't bring a voodoo doll to meetings. But still, recognize that everybody is afraid of something. Everybody's battling something, everybody's going through something. So maybe if I say something to you that lands wrong, it was just one of those days, that doesn't excuse it. Please don't misunderstand, I'm not saying that I can just be mean to you because my son, this is his birthday and he died. But understand that everybody's going through something. And that goes not just for the board, it goes for administrators, it goes for staff, it goes for students, it goes for parents. You know? Anybody can get on our last nerve. And we're really tempted to give them a piece of our mind, but I don't even have enough pieces to give away. But just, you know, if we can encourage that in ourselves and in our kids and model it... Y'all did not know this was going to be therapy. Well, I didn't either. Okay, what else? Well, I'm going to give you a five-minute break. And then we will resume. And y'all know my super, super-secret cellphone number, so if you think of something you don't want to say out loud, you're welcome to text it to me and I will read it and deal with it appropriately. Five-minute break. I just said it pretty obvious.
There's dessert.
I got dessert from last night in my bag. Chocolate chip cookie.
I think, um, I think five would probably be the appropriate number to focus on this first year, but, um... I like five topics. Kind of where we are, but a couple of things go together. Like maybe enrollment and attendance. You know, supporting our staff, creating a positive culture, like those things kind of go together. But I think if we stuck it to four or five topics of, um, things we want to focus on, that that would be a, uh, an attainable route to take for her, us.
Well, I think, you know, enrollment, I'm already working on that. Attendance, I think, is crucial. I always think culture is good. And I think we've got to start on our financial piece. I mean, we've already started, but to me, that's... Very key. And, um, I think, you know, when you're efficient, you're streamlining programs. That kind of goes together. And, um... I, I just booked a page and said, "Take this job and love it." I just had to put in the number five.
I'm, I'm gonna send you that PowerPoint.
I would love to read that. You know, I think, um, I also think when you have a good culture, you have good teaching. Because people are excited. But I think reading scores, I mean, academics is well repairable. So I think we can show gains in that just by streamlining programs. And efficiency and how we teach our teachers to teach. And, you know, when you look at how many things they have, which been working with curriculum and they have to do this, and then they have to do this, and this. You don't do anything well. So... I think that's six. I, I...
I think these are things we've been talking about since she got here, you know? So she's pretty aware of what, what our concerns have been or what we want to focus on. So that's why she said, "I've already started this," because we've been really open with her about this is what we need and want right now. So...
I think these are all trackable things. So... Yeah, and we need to send work.
Not only will you tell them what you have done, but you'll also be prepared to say, "Here's what the next phase will be, the next step will be, after you build those relationships." So, Madam President, since you're no longer in my leadership class and I have to... Um, do we need to refine them more?
No, I mean, does anybody else have any additional thoughts or when you look at this, anything else you want to say related to that?
Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. And if anybody emails you, you'll share it with everybody else. I'm telling you, the SOPA P is, brain cells have gone downhill quickly. She even got Larry to get some. You should be ashamed of yourself, Dean. Stuffing us. Okay.
Okay. Um, and then we'll go to six D.
Yes. I reserve the right to come back to six A. I just want you to know that.
Okay, no problem.
I'm a lawyer. I reserve the right to have extra time.
So for, um, the next thing, uh, it's not six, it's three A, it's three B, training reductions. So, uh, last year, as we're all aware, because we did a presentation on SLI, we each took a sticky note and wrote like the item or topic, um, that we thought was really valuable from our learning experience. And then we ended up putting them in glue. And so I did pull the five governance topics, or areas, that we as a board are focused on, which vision and goals, systems and processes, progress and accountability, advocacy and engagement, and teamwork and synergy. And so I thought what, to help keep us focused on governance, to take what you learned from SLI, whether it was a concept, or it was an idea to move us forward, whatever it was, and write each one down on a separate sticky note. And then we'll put them up and see what buckets they fall in and have a discussion about what we learned. And then see what comes out of that. Um, I think we have SLI, we have governance camp that I know Kim and Carol went to, and then I have leadership task group. So just take a few minutes and jot down your reflections and your learning from the different trainings you've been to. And one idea or one thing per sticky note. And then we'll talk about it.
I said three, but you know, some people are like, you know, they want to be...
We don't want to be restricted in our...
Exactly. I'm on there, so I'm just trying to think. You can do the Jeffrey.
Apparently it'll play for an hour. What, an hour of the Jeffrey music?
No, I didn't prepare the right way, so I just put...
That's exciting, this game.
Blackjack dealer.
I've got real plenty over here.
No, no, don't enable her, please. My goodness. My cryptic ideas, Hershey faces. I love those. Entire bag, long after I was born. I don't know why I was a...
Peanut M and M's. Wendy Benson, she's got something in her office. Now I can't stop thinking about it. No?
It's great for culture.
Yeah, play them and just go do it.
There's little cups. There's little like Jell-O cups and people kept giving them. It's great because then they kept saying hi.
I saw my college roommate in July. She and her mother had a bowl of Rico. And apparently they get it for big bucks at Costco. So I was impressed.
Most of God's great people are.
I've had enough of Jeffrey music. I'm sorry. And I love Jeffrey. He won't stop. She's gonna play for hours.
It is hard. What is...? I don't remember what I'm asking. Reverse.
I used to live in New York and they filmed the Hundred Thousand Dollar Pyramid there. And just when I was gonna be old enough to go on, they moved it to California.
Oh, is it, is it still on?
I don't think so.
That was a good show.
I loved it.
Price is Right is still on. Let's Make a Deal is still on.
I don't know anything.
I went to the Price is Right. The girl right behind me got called up. I was like... In the video, if you slow it down, you can see my whole hair goes, my hair goes shh. Looking back at her, yeah. Like, how'd she get called? What's that? Oh, I, I, me too.
Well, let me just say this. Do not tell somebody it's a good answer when it's a stupid answer.
I know, right? I'm like, but it's not.
When, what's-his-name looks like, that could possibly be up there, and then it's up there.
Oh, he's the best host. He's the best host.
Yeah, he's, he's...
He's fantastic.
All right, you're done. Now what do you do?
So, um, of course, I can't see it.
We try to read them from here?
So maybe each person shared a three, like, oh, I have to get up and go over there.
Yes, and take the money.
And take the money.
Should I go around the table?
If you say anybody wants, make it sound like nobody wants to say, "Who wants to go first?"
My honey hands, yeah. Okay, so one of the first ones, um, I put up here was sped transition to the workforce. And this was a, this was a presentation by LISD. And they have something called Project Search, and I actually have a, a former client that is taking advantage of this, where they're district partners with, um, the Gaylord Texan. And they send kids that they vetted and whatnot, and there's a whole Job Olympics thing. Like, there's a whole process to this. But their kids are being employed after they graduate high school. So we have eighty percent of the kids that will graduate from our, from high school with special needs are not gonna be working. They're gonna be sitting on the couch somewhere watching TV. So I think it's really important that public schools, as much as we can, job coach and get those kids out there so they can, they are employable and they can gain independence past graduation. So I put that between vision and goals, like that's, it would be a lofty goal, but it's something that's so important to kids. Um, we talk about other student outcomes, like reading, math, blah, blah, blah. These kids don't have that measurement, per se, so their student outcome would be, are they employable? Can they have a job? Can they be independent? Can they pay their bills? So to me, that's between like a systems and processes, like if we'd have that system in place and between a vision and goal. And also progress and accountability. Because we, holding students with special needs accountable for all the things, we don't really do that either. We can't let that slide too. So hence reason they're sitting on the couch unemployed when they're twenty-one or twenty-two years old. Oh, and this one, I just put ongoing program evaluations. And not just for superintendent or whoever, but just, are we using this? Is this math curriculum working? Is, are the kids using it? Are we spending the right kind of money? Are all those things along the way, instead of throwing our hands up when we see scores come back to us and we're like, well, who's gathering the data? So along the way would be better. And then on the bottom one, I put for teamwork and synergy is, um, unified, not uniform. In other words, we are together as a team, but we're not necessarily all the same. So that, I thought that was a good, a good takeaway.
Okay. I was really focused at SLI on systems and how we're doing things. Up to my mouth. Why are we even doing this? Out of curiosity.
It's being recorded.
It's not, yeah, I know, but it's, we have never recorded in all the years. And there is no requirement that work study should be, uh, recorded. But anyway, I, I'm happy to do it if we want to do it, but the reality is, there is no reason to do it. Anyway, uh, systems and processes. One of the sessions that I attended was dealing with special ed. And they talked about that there are two hundred and seventy specific compliances that are a part of the special ed department. But the biggest suggestion they said to improve is to start focusing on your evaluation processes and systems. Most school districts aren't getting kids into special ed as much as we need to. And so they said that we really need to take a look at that. The, uh, another one that was really interesting, and we're looking at trying to trim budgeting and all of the various pieces, and look at that, they said benchmarking is a process to use for budget evaluation. And to take a look as we begin to see, uh, it didn't really talk, call it zero base budgeting, but, uh, it really talked about that focus on make sure that you're funding specifically on your priority issues. How is this dollar that you're planning to spend being, you know, connected to your priorities? And somewhere I put a third something or other. Oh, that AI is impacting our district more every day. Um, oh, that A I is impacting our district more every day, uh, in, in every way. And so we need to be finding ways to deal effectively, make sure we've got policy and things in place to deal with the A I issues. I had, I gotta confess, I had never heard of Chat G P T. Now I have.
Good answer. Frankie?
Y'all are not gonna be on family TV.
Okay, I have a couple too. I wanna start with the H R and generational differences. That was awesome. All of the ones I attended were amazing, except one, I wasn't no fan of it, but whatever. H R and generational differences talks about just in general the scope of Generation Z, Millennials, Boomers, everybody across the districts, right? Like, how old? What are we doing? Are you giving each other compassion and grace on how they treat each other? Are we being more efficient with anything? So like hiring process, they're trying to make sure it's mobile, it's quicker, it's easier to access. If you wanna recruit younger, you hit a different way. We can't do the same thing over and over again. So I thought that was super impressive. Um, so another one I, two I actually went to were engaging and connecting with Spanish speakers. So from my understanding, as of twenty thirty, we're gonna have four point four million Latinos living in Texas, which is incredible. I think that's crazy, but it's a lot of kids, right? Under the age of eighteen. And so basically, it, they talked about how can we engage our communities and our Spanish-speaking families? And one of them is making sure we translate, making sure we help the families, making sure we teach in English and Spanish to engage them, right? And any minority, it doesn't just have to be Latinos. Uh, the other one was student voices, and this was awesome. So talk about A I. They used A I to get a student voice intake. It was so cool. You generated it from where you're sitting, you give their, your opinion on what you think, and it generates a bubble and it comes up with ideas. That was so cool. I mean, to have our students use A I in a positive way and just bring this out in them and to collaborate on what the issues have been on campus, that's really cool. To me, it was really cool. I thought it was awesome. I can give you all more details later. And then partnerships, that was also really cool because, like, she's already doing it. But police officers engaging with our communities, especially in drug-related areas. If a police officer can go and play on a playground with the fourth or fifth grader, it'll change their life in middle school and high school. And if we could engage more partnerships in that aspect, it would help us so much. They talked about fraternities and sororities and how these volunteers are willing to come and engage with our students. We just need to, and get them to come and do a partnership with us. So those are mine.
He was very excited about going on the playground.
Do that right now.
See?
Good answer. Good answer.
Okay, mine, um, I went to, one of the, one I thought was pretty impactful was, um, on branding your district. And it was how, um, DeSoto, you know, they were in the news for financial problems and all kinds of things. And so each one of their board members took a, a stand on what they did as a board to really brand the community and to go out there and say, you know, we've had this in the past, we've been in the news, we've lost three superintendents, we've done this. And they really all took a piece of it and, and promoted the district, and I thought it was just phenomenal. Um, the other one I went to was, um, what, what can we say? And it was, um, about board members and what is confidential information and what isn't. And, you know, we always think that personnel may not be confidential, but the difference between the two. And so that was done by a law firm, and I thought it was, it was standing room only in there. So I have the presentation and sometime we can go over it. And then, um, I went to, um, another one on community engagement and how, um, I think it was Mansfield, and how they got all the partnerships with their STEAM program. So it wasn't just, we learned welding, it was, we learned welding and we kinda, what you were saying earlier on, it was, now we can employ you here. And a big part of that was there, some of our students with special needs. So I went, I just thought they were all just dynamic sessions, so.
Good answer. Not the golf club.
Okay, so, um. I apologize. So, uh, bigger picture from L Tasby, I think the camaraderie that you develop when you have twenty-four other trustees from across the state, from districts from like a hundred kids to a hundred thousand kids. Um, I have a network now of people that, if like, there's something going on in our district, and I'm like, hmm, is there a policy for that? Or, I wonder how they handle that? Or have they had to deal with this? I have a group of people that you can just reach out to and, like, within five minutes, they all text back. And just even though if it's information for my brain, but then I can go ask for more information if it's something that I think could help us. And I, the experience between that, and then going to schools all over the state, from the prison school to schools at the border, all different sizes, and really seeing that no matter where they are in Texas, everybody's doing great things for kids, and that we have to remember the awesome things that are happening, but also the struggles that every district has and knowing that challenges that we face could be unique but may not be unique, and that we're all have to be in it together, and the more that we can advocate with our legislature to help them see the story and invite them into our schools and how critically important it is to make sure they're engaged. So kudos to L Tasby because, um, it was an incredible experience. I encourage everybody to do it. Um, and then one, a few of the things that also came out was identifying goals and align them from the top down. So when we set goals with Dr. Eldrich, bringing them all the way down to the campuses so that it's a unified goal. So even when we're doing our adopted trustee or we're out at campuses, we all know what the three priorities are, and we can even have conversations on the campuses about how those priorities are going. And, um, then they also talked about having an annual monitoring calendar so that it's not, we set the goal and then we evaluate eight or nine months later, but having the monitoring calendar along the way, so we know what we expect to see before we get a year later and the data. So that, that was really powerful. Um, another one was new teacher support and recognizing the amount of alternatively certified teachers we have, and that we have, like, fifty percent of teachers in the state are alternatively certified and/or new teachers with less than five years of experience, and the importance of mentorship and developing a program to ensure that our new teachers are staying in the profession. Because clearly it's a challenge to keep them in the profession, but then also recognizing that they're not going through the traditional education programs of a four-year university because they're alt cert, and that we have to identify which program they're coming from and tailor our support to them based on where, where their background is. Uh, that was important. Um, and the last one was a book called The Art of Small Talk. And it was really interesting because it talked about, number one, which is something I'm not very good at, um, asking people their name and then stating their name back to them, and then making it a point to, in that same conversation, repeat their name to them, says it helps your brain remember the name. And that before you go into an environment, like, let's say we're going to a ribbon cutting somewhere, you pre-think about what questions you're gonna ask when you see community members in that space. Think about who your audience is and the type of questions that you might ask, because when you have that small talk conversation, when you remember their name and you restate it and you ask a specific question because you're pre-thinking who might be in the room, it will help you remember something about them so that the next time, when you see them, you're more likely to know their name and you're more likely to be able to say like, well, Kay, how did it go at Lovejoy last week? I remember you were doing that. And then you build that connection and then they see that you value them more because you remembered something. So it's a really good book, The Art of Small Talk. Um, and so that was something I'm working on, I'm not very good at it, but it's stuck with me, so.
Okay, I had one at the top. Um, okay, this one was Brian College Station did a really, actually, sorry, Brian, just Brian I S D, did a great presentation about just their board initiatives and organization. I was, I was impressed with them. One of their ideas though was a state of the district that was internal for the board. So it was presented to the board by the cabinet members and content experts of the district, and it was all data-driven. And they do that state of the district prior to their, uh, goal-setting meeting. So that way they have like all of this data presented to them, and then they go, I guess, a later meeting when they do their, uh, goal-setting. So I thought that was really great. And then you're also hearing from the content experts, which is really great. So that was a really cool idea, and then my other ones are at the bottom. Um, okay, so y'all know I love H E B, the school district, not the grocery store, because we don't have one of those. So I can't even know that I love them because we don't have one, Kay? It's very sad. But H E B I S D has impressed me for years. They're actually the ones that inspired us to, um, present this past year and just everything about them, I'm always so impressed. So their theme this year was the secret sauce. And they presented, and I can't remember the number, it was like maybe twelve different things that they considered the secret sauce to why they are successful as a board and district. And it's just, it's good common sense stuff. So I sat through their session, and they laugh every time I walk in because they're like, you come to all of our sessions every year. And I'm like, and every year I learn something. But this year I left there and I thought, I think I went and found you. I said, we should do a case study on them. Like, instead of taking a bunch of ideas from them, again, from me, why don't we as a board consider, like, going and meeting with them and going and listening to one of their things that they're doing and just learning, like, do a case study? And then we can all collaboratively listen and learn, rather than me every year saying, listen to what they told us this year. So this year I literally said, case study on H E B, I think it'd be really cool. Oh, okay, here's my other one. Um, another district, don't remember who, many town hall meetings that they do, they send three board members out into the community to specific areas, and then they rotate so that it's three different board members every time and it's three different areas. And they just do little town hall meetings on the school district, and I thought that was a really cool idea, a way to get us all out in the community, um, and a way for us to mix and mingle among board members too in different parts of the community. So, that's it.
And H E B, everyone of their board members goes through leadership task.
Good answer.
Oh, y'all, cue me.
Yay, good job.
You're not gonna be on family TV.
Okay, mine, um, where are mine? The advocacy and engagement, um, about training others, student ambassadors, and parents are our partners. You know, and we, we can utilize them. Oh, we can use them. We can use them. And I know we've talked about this a lot, but we can use them as our partners, and when we engage them, they wanna, they want, they want that. But since the relationship lacks, they're looking for more, and we have to find a way to get to them. Uh, as far as the Latinos in Amer, in Amer, America or Texas, that's Texas. You said four point four million, and if there's five point five million students, think about the language we're not speaking, the communication, and that can be applied to all nations and our sped kids especially. So it's important to not speak their language, but have that grace and compassion and not, and remove the frustration for them not understanding what we need from them. Uh, another thing would be meeting them where they are when it comes to our enrollment. Uh, going out to their neighborhoods, you know, los barrios, uh, the areas that, that they call home that maybe we don't enter, uh, as a society. But meeting all cultures where they are and understanding their needs and their way and being able to create a language that, uh, helps us help them. Because if we don't understand what they need, we'll never, never communicate. Uh, so the apartment thing was a really big thing to go into, uh, North, uh, North Dallas, which is the Carols and the Cami area. Huge, huge over there. I mean, we really should go out there and set up a enrollment tent because they'll come out of the woodwork. You know, because there's someone's there to listen to them. And we don't know how many kids there really are, especially behind the Prestonwood Baptist Church. You know, these were all ideas that, you know, reaching them, meeting them where they are, and they need us. You know, they want to be reached out to, and it's so important, um, for those community relationships. Uh, of course, uh, I put down, um, training others, the student ambassadors. You know, the kids in our district can tell us everything we wanna know, but they have to have confidence in us. And they have to know that it's okay to share. You know, if we're gonna have, because I think that the, the culture, the population, if the parents, they change, then the kids change. But if we don't have that communication, we're gonna continue to not, uh, reach them and know what their true needs are. Um, team building, I wrote down team billing, a common vision and goals. Of course, we talked about that with U K, which is great, and that's, I was just right, right on that. And then, um, where's my other one? Of cour, our sped kids too. Yes, there's so many great programs out there. I know we have a lot, I'm very involved in that. But again, their parents are our partners and they need us. You know, if you go to the graduations at Mary Grimes, if you sit with the children and their families, you know, they need people to have compassion for their children because they are our students. And they should be visualized one hundred percent like the rest of the population. And that means glorifying their graduations, their jobs, what they do, their programs, because they don't know that they're not a hundred percent a, a, are accurately acknowledged. You know, because they only know what they know. And like Kim shared, it has nothing to do with their grades, and they are great performers. For me, it's their performance and the respect. And you don't have to tell them ten times. I mean, honestly, they love you, they adore you, they want to be with you, and they wanna please you. They can't wait to be with you, someone to, to, you know, acknowledge, acknowledge that they're in the room. And they're, and they're just full of life and they light up and just, you know, my heart, they have my heart. Okay, I think that was it. Team building, common vision and goals, training others, parents, student ambassadors. And, um, I also said in the DeSoto, um, and that's where I came up with changing parent attitudes or opinions changes the kids, because they had a devastating situation in DeSoto, and now they're on fire. I mean, they have really done, turned it around, and it's all parent communication. Because if the parents get it and we've supplied them all the information that they need, then the kids are gonna be okay. But in the meantime, you know, there's crises and all they're doing is talking about crises, that's what you're gonna get for your kids. And they're gonna come in rebelling, they're not gonna wanna learn, and then you're gonna have more issues than you can handle. So anyway, DeSoto was awesome, an awesome turnaround. But I think that's all mine.
Do your high schools have soccer games?
Yes.
Do you broadcast the soccer games?
Oh, that's one, that's one of mine, I was gonna mention that.
Well, you did.
It was awesome.
So I'm gonna.
In Longview.
That's what Longview did.
He did such a good job.
Started to broadcast the soccer games, like we broadcast football, but he broadcast them in Spanish. And it just engaged the community, and then they started, they do radio programs in Spanish. And it was just, you thought, well, well, God, that didn't cost anything, but who would've thought of it?
Yes, it was awesome.
And Metroplex I S D just entered into a streaming partnership, membership for sports.
Would you talk to see that thirteen-year-old got, got signed to a Metro soccer team?
I did see that.
This is not just football anymore, or American football, but soccer is football if you're everywhere else. This is not just football anymore, or American football, but soccer is football if you're everywhere else.
Okay, so as I mentioned, I didn't prepare correctly for this. I had gone back through my notes and highlighted something from each of my sessions. And then I went through and identified what those, what the three kind of trends were of what I had seen. And then went back through the highlights and put each one of those into the trend, one of the three trends. So in a quick pivot, my trends were monitor, efficiency and accountability. Monitor, we have to be better. We don't do it well. Efficiency, and that's both as teamwork and synergy and systems and processes, that's business. And accountability, most importantly, board accountability, superintendent, staff and student accountability as well.
Look at you.
Very efficient.
Very.
Hey, Sarah.
Yes, and she was the first person to present that.
But you made me think of some, oh, one of the things, when you talk about efficiency. One of the things I want you to think about, and I have no idea how long your board meetings last. But how can you streamline those as well? To where, and I'm not looking at anybody in particular, I was just, you know, one of the things you need to think about and.
I have that highlighted.
I know you did. I could, I could see from over here that it was highlighted. Because when we talk about student outcomes, you know, one of the things that they focus on in Lone Star Governance and Great on Their Behalf is actually a really good book. Yeah, it's really good. Great on Their Behalf. And it comes on an audiobook. Actually, no, I'm lying. I'm sorry. It came on a Kindle book that I bought for 99 cent when it was on sale. But I also have the hard, hard copy. But it's a really good book and it talks about student outcomes. But it also talks about how much time in your board meetings are you actually spending on student outcomes? So it's, you know, there's certain things you have to do. And a lot of that is on consent agenda, you know, you gotta, you gotta look at finances, you gotta do these things. But outside of those required things, how much time are you spending talking about student outcomes? So, yeah. Okay, what else, Madam President? What else do we do with this?
Well, I think what's interesting is when we did this last year, we had like concepts and initiatives. And it feels a little different this year. Like it feels like some like ideas of like things we could do. Like a special ed, supporting them in their trajectory. But it, it just feels different. Like it feels like, I don't know how to describe it. Almost like a synergy, like if you think about the things that we talked about that were important to us, to our goals. You see things in these things related to governance that air with these goals. And it's just kind of interesting to me. So, I mean, like in the little thing, we spent dots on what's most important to us. But I think last year, one of the things we found was that we had a real focus around engagement with the community. And there was like, these were more bubbled in one area, a little big chunk of them that were in that area. But now people have things all over the place. And what I heard was a lot of things came back to like relationships and partnerships. And looking at how we support staff. And so there's just a mixture. So I don't, like I'm not one to say like, we have to spend dots now, we need to do this. But I think it's just really interesting to me, listening to what everybody said and how things kind of coalesce around some of the goals. So I'm curious, like what are your all reflections, just in general, when you hear what everybody else heard and thought was valuable?
I did notice that we're very even this year, whereas I felt last year, we all had these like list of things that, this is what we should be doing. Going to the council meetings, doing all those things and talking with the community, engaging, going to all the things. But this year, we're pretty even. And I think part of it's because we're doing some of those things. We're doing some of the things that we identified last year, even with the superintendent search that kind of put things at a halt for six months. But we're doing them already. So we're getting out there in the community, we're, we're going to city council meetings, she's going to city council meetings. We're, we're doing the things that we said we wanted to do. So I think part of that, we're meeting those goals and that's awesome.
So we're taking it to the next step now, if that makes sense.
Mature.
Yes.
Sounds like mature, they're growing up. Well, and part of coming together to hire a superintendent means that you kind of had to agree on some things that were important.
I think last year also, like I think we've entitled it like board engagement initiatives. Because it was like, what were we gonna do differently to engage ourselves in the community? But now, I think there's a different focus of how are we gonna work together to support her, to make sure that we're moving the district forward? And so it's just, it feels, it feels like a different vibe. Any other thoughts?
I think for me, I've never seen people, an entire board so energized to go to a conference and to come back and want to share. And I'm sure as you go around, it's, you know, in my previous position, just getting a board to go to a conference, to go to sessions and be excited about the learning of what we can all do to me as a blessing and a, and a support system within itself.
We had a whole committee called the Creep Committee, and I don't remember what the acronym stood for now. But it was the people who come into the back of the room at the end of the session to get the number. Or worse yet, who walk out and people would be like a drug deal in front of me. People would go, did you get a number from that session this morning? It's like, really? Like I teach ethics. Do you not grasp that this is, if students did this, we would call it cheating? So yeah, it is huge to me that people actually go and go to sessions. And I went to a conference when I first became a, a new school board member, a national conference. And there had been, they had a video because a television station had followed their board members who didn't go to the conference and who went shopping and who went to visit their, their relatives. And I was like, oh my God. I was like scared straight. Not that I wasn't gonna go, but it is so important that when your district is sending you, that you not only show up. But I love that, that you're excited and you're like, I had that down too. And yeah, that was great. Because that's the whole point. You know, it's infectious. Y'all, when you are lifelong learners, you can then expect your staff and your students to do that. So, I'm impressed. That was fun. And I've actually never had a board that did that, just so you know.
And then we presented on it, SLI this year. That was our presentation.
Now that.
Went to SLI, now what?
That was amazing. And I was there, in the back.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, because you were the one in, for.
Yeah.
Yes.
She came to get the code.
I did, right? I came to get the number.
She came to heckle us, actually.
You know, when I was a board member and I would present sessions, I would forget to put my own number in. Anyway, yeah, that's probably why they don't, I'm not a board member anymore. But, anything else on this?
Is there anything that stands out different from the goals we have already talked about collectively? That we think we need to ensure goes in with those goals or is added onto those goals? Do you want to go read them again?
I can read them again. I can't.
Can you name that too? You have to take this.
Okay, well, I don't, my phone's over there. Okay, so identifying goals and aligning them from the top down.
Okay, you can't hear it.
Identifying goals and aligning them from the top down with an annual monitoring calendar. State of the district presentation to the board by cabinet or content experts to support the board priorities meeting. Branding, monitor, sped transition to workforce. What can we say, board members and confidentiality, HR and generational differences. Compliance with special education and a focus on evaluation. Benchmarking in the budget, efficiency, new teacher support and alt certification. AI and its impact on the district, ongoing program evaluations, accountability. Mini town hall meetings, training others including student ambassadors, engaging, connecting with the Spanish speakers. Student voice, partnerships including fraternity, sororities and law enforcement. Consider a case study of HEB, unified, not uniform, community engagement, team building, common vision and goals, the fine art of small talk.
So last year, didn't we stack them? Because some of them are similar to others. Can we do that again?
Yeah, you see stacks?
You just like stack them?
Well, it's just last, I guess it was easier because then you could say, okay, vision, well, this is what we'd like to work on. System and process, this is what we'd like to work on. Progress and like subject based on each, you know.
I'm having trouble stacking. Because even when I was saying. Do you see, you must see stacks. It's fine, come on.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Your phone's right there.
I have a middle schooler.
It's a millennial thing.
It's a, yeah. It's a middle schooler thing. Millennials.
Student ambassadors, student voice.
Oh, sorry.
Community engagement, partnerships, this.
Yes, right? Community engagement partnership.
Common vision and goals goes with identifying goals and unifying them.
Is it unified, not uniform, team building?
I think so.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I missed it. Oh, yeah.
She said yes. Let me ask. Oops. Ooh.
Yep. There you go.
Unified, did you want it to be unified?
It did. That's okay.
I thought you were gonna put partnerships with community engagement.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
What can we say?
That's like board, what can we say, like confidentiality, mm-hmm.
Sped transition to workforce.
Wasn't there another sped?
Wasn't there another one?
Sped.
Right? Is that okay?
What did it say? Sped transition to the workforce and then compliance with sped. So sped-related things.
State of district presentation to board is monitored?
Could be.
Or accountability.
Accountability.
Yeah, put that with accountability with that.
And couldn't that go with goals?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Move it up?
Mm-hmm, with the goals. That's like one whole thing.
Okay. What are all the systemic processes? None of those go together? What can we say?
Okay. What can we say, HR and generational differences, sped? I can't read that. Oh, benchmarking, role and budgeting, efficiency, new teacher support and alternative certification, teacher exchange. So like going back to what we already had, we had supporting staff. Where's your list? Attendance and enrollment, efficiencies with finances. Partnering for climate and culture and student outcomes with reading and special education. So what do you think of this list? Is there anything you want to add to that list or are these things that are already engaged in that?
I think they're very much engaged with what you're already done.
Yeah, okay. Okay, then we don't need to add anything. We just keep these things in the back of our head. You got anything else, Randy?
Not in my head, yeah.
Okay. So then the only other thing was last year, Sally helped me go look in the meeting minutes to confirm. Our goals were the Governance Core Book Study, which we got through three through haptors and found a superintendent. So that's a win.
Yeah, I mean, like, that's a win, right?
So that was one of our goals. Do we have, do we want to continue that goal as a board to continue reading the Governance Core? So we can finish it?
How many chapters in there?
I think it has seven chapters. Don't quote me.
I think Randy needs to get cut out, right?
Mm-hmm. He might have read it before.
You guys can give me Cliff Notes version of the first chapters.
There we go.
There actually is one online. If you Google it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yes to continuing on Governance Core?
I know, should finish it. We should finish what we said to do.
Yes.
Okay. The second one was attending city council meetings. And we like tipped the toe in that because we told the community about the superintendent search and we asked for their input. So we went to a city council meeting. But now, we're in a new place. Can you share that you've been?
So I went Tuesday night and shared just an update of what we're doing at the Carrollton City Council. And I got great feedback. And one of the things the city council said was, you should bring a principal. We could bring a board member. And so I think that was just great input from them that we want to now see the people that work in the organization. So I thought that was great things to share.
So how do we feel about continuing that, but also put a schedule together to get into the city council meetings to share updates? Because we also have multiple municipalities to cover.
Yeah. I think we should, I think that should definitely be a goal. I think that we need to make sure that we're, whatever is we're sharing, we're kind of agreeing that that's what we're sharing. As far as like, so that the next person can follow up with whatever that person said before and then we're staying on the same track. So like, have categories.
That makes me think like Farber's Branch now probably should be able to do the same thing with Carrollton. Because I ended it at Farber's Branch saying, we're hiring a superintendent. Okay.
But that's what I mean, yeah. Here she is. But just having like, just make sure that we're all saying something similar.
Continuity.
Continuity of communication, exactly.
We can write those through for, just updates.
Yeah, a little update, boom, boom, boom.
So driven by the administration, supported by the board?
Yes.
Okay. Are we good with that? Okay, the other one that we put on hold was town hall meetings. Because we needed to hire a superintendent. And so we had said in, I think it was 22, 23, oh, that's a great idea. We should target that for 23, 24. And then, no, opposite, 21, 22, target it for last year. And then we hired a superintendent. So we didn't go do town hall meetings. But I would like to, like that's something we said we would consider doing in the future. How important is that? And why, what would be the purpose, knowing all these goals we already have in place?
I think it's less important now and mainly because Wendy is getting herself out there to the Rotary Club, to, you know, the council meetings, to other organizations. So she's kind of doing that already on a smaller scale. So I think maybe we're, she's covering that at this time. But it's really to get to know the superintendent, what we're doing, you have any questions, problems or concerns, you know, here's the people you come to, here's your visual. But I think all that's happening, thanks to our great communication person and our superintendent, because she's doing those things.
The people who come to those meetings are not necessarily your parents.
Right, yeah.
So I see town hall as serving a different population.
I was gonna say, I think if our goal is enrollment and attendance, I think in the spring, we should host these mini town hall meetings. With maybe an enrollment focus, but also being televised. I think we could combine several elements.
Yeah.
And it would be in our communities where, you know, our apartment area where most, you know, some of our students live here, but they live here. And I think it would help our community engagement.
And I think if there's a topic, that's, that's a different story versus being a complaint session or them talking to us about what's happening. Yeah.
It could be enrollment, you know, learn about us, go, you know. Let me tell you the programs we offer, because you started off the meeting saying, okay, you told somebody that they could come to welding. Some of our families don't know what programs we have. And to me, the, the thing I've been talking to parents about is the hardest thing to pick right now is in middle school. They think it's like picking in college, because they don't know, right?
As a middle school mom.
So those could be informative. We can, you know, hire young, you know, millennials, like how do we do that, you know? You know, I mean, just all those things go together to me.
Yeah.
Okay, speaking of Brian ISD, they did, they did a Brian ISD showcase and it was on like a Friday night. I guess the town maybe does something already and they come to film one of them. And they did student performances, departments had different tables and they were like on the birthday of the district president. I think our district was so big that we could like, yes, target specific areas. But, and why not do like a showcase at a theater pattern?
Oh, my God, I was just thinking that.
And do it around enrollment. So do it right before parents are gonna start deciding, you know, whether to go.
So in the spring, we do programs of choice when the high schools are open to go see them. And if we could just bring them together, then maybe the parents could say, wow, I don't need to go all the way across to send my kid. I could send them either like, look at these awesome things that are happening at the school.
And like walking away with big steps.
Yes.
It's great that there's a program of choice. Yes, I remember that was here. But now to go enroll, I need to take this with me.
Overwhelming, yes.
Too much of her code.
Yes, it's the, it's the not just tell us about it, it's the now how do you engage?
Cue our home card.
Ew.
AI.
Exactly.
And all of our t-shirts will have that code.
And your back.
And then the board flash.
Or, you know, or tattoos. Scandy.
Smart.
Scandy, you know, put your fist up like, what is that, American?
Wonder Woman.
There you go.
I think about people walking around with iPads, taking down people's information.
Like you go in Apple Store.
Yes, because how can I help you? Oh, yeah, what's your name? What's your phone number? Let me text you whenever it's ready. Oh, I'm ready. I got a text. It's like a restaurant. We have to think forward.
Yes, and it's techno.
Yes, technology to our benefit.
So is that our, are the town hall meetings our goals or is that the administration and staff goals and we're supporting? How would we, how do, how would we engage with that kind of a meeting, when it's talking about enrollment? Like, I guess my vision would be that people from the district would stand up and.
Well, I think you all bring up their perspective. You have the, the excitement of what's done for your child.
Okay.
So you're being supportive.
We're being supportive. That's what I'm asking.
Having communities with us or talking about how amazing our schools are, us selling the district.
And we are doing that. We should be.
She means emphasize like interview or something like that.
Yeah, oh, at a meeting.
At a town hall.
I don't know, I would come up with that.
I was just wondering, I'm just trying to think, is that our goal or is that a goal for the administration? That's what I'm trying to just differentiate. We're here to, we're gonna support you for whatever it is, but that's all I'm asking.
Go under culture or home engagement and all that, I think online doesn't work so concrete, I think it really is encompassed. Partnership goal.
It is definitely partnership.
Yeah, I think Farmers Branch is gonna have a town hall. And I don't know, I don't know if state gives you the opportunity.
I guess I feel like we need to define like town hall as compared to showcase.
Showcase.
Showcase. And I think what I'm hearing is more of a showcase, less of a like, you're gonna come sit in a room and we're gonna talk to you about something and you're gonna ask us questions.
Right, that's what I was trying to get at.
Like when, when we went to the city of Carrollton's show, state of the dis- state of the city, they had, they showcased all, like, here's the police department. Here's the, you know, water department, here's the emergency management, you could do that, and it was fun.
It was fun.
I think that would be neat, because we do have campuses where we can showcase, not town hall, showcase special things. This is what this area provides, that's pretty neat, just because you can see the programs.
You're bringing this around, it would be a showcase.
A one-stop shop.
Right.
Town hall is not gonna be.
No.
Right, that's kinda what I'm trying to, that's why I'm just trying to gather what we're trying to do.
So I think, I think from like our perspective right now, we as a board need to do governance board. And then we need to support her with the goals, which would include showcasing to support enrollment and showcasing the district and supporting her whatever she needs to be there.
Yes, we're happy to support and do, I'm just trying to figure out.
And you know, Sheffield actually. I was gonna say Sheffield opened their library throughout the summer and invited all the families to come in and invite someone. See, that would've been superb, bring your cousin, your neighbors, little sister, whatever. And they love it, cause they love their brand new school, they love the love that they get from the staff there. And it's like their home and they wanna be there, so they're all brought somewhere. Imagine the impact on enrollment there, you know, our brand new spot and everybody loves it, you could do that for every field, area, uh, all the high schools. Recruiting.
Okay, so the last one we had from last year was Team of Eight Community Calendar. And I think this has morphed in a lot of ways, and so I think it's good to talk about it. Um, we started with the calendar being focused on if we got, we heard or got invited to something in the community, then it would be in a central location. So that we could RSVP, so we knew we at least had some type of coverage, if we wanted to have coverage. But also for our personalized knowing, like, oh, two people are already going to that, like, somebody's gonna be there.
Yeah.
We don't have to worry or stress. And I think it morphed into it's an everything calendar. So all of our, kind of like our board meetings are on there, but no RSVP, like, everything's on the calendar. Um, and I think we've gotten, I've got a little bit of feedback that we need calendar invites again for things like board meetings, not just on the calendar. And I think we fixed that, where anything that is a board meeting, you should be getting a calendar invite for, or anything that's like, I won't, like, required, like graduation. Major district level events are calendar invite, but they're also on the, um, how are people feeling about the structure now?
I like it better.
You like it better?
I like it better.
Okay, it's more unified, or just you can go to one spot and see what sets, if that makes sense. Okay. Any other feedback?
They're gonna fix filing, so it'll work.
It's improved, it's not, it's not efficient, I mean, it's, um, it's, you know. Excel is not a calendaring tool, Outlook is, I mean, Outlook calendars, so, but.
So you think everything should go on Outlook?
Uh.
Yes, right, I know you're asking Tara, but I'll answer. Yeah.
Well, it's definitely.
Do you feel strongly about that?
Is it easier because you click yes or no without having to open up an Excel spreadsheet?
Well, and it puts it on the calendar.
Yeah.
And if there's changes to the event, it comes through, um, Outlook.
Oh.
Um, I mean, you know, I don't, yeah.
You don't go and open the Excel spreadsheet more than once a week?
I'm looking at Outlook for where I have to be. If it's on an Excel spreadsheet, I'm probably not gonna be there, because I don't.
I, I totally agree. Just be in one place, yeah.
And when you're on a cell phone, you gotta go over four pages and then come back to see, what does that say?
Yeah, uh-huh.
And come back, and, you know.
But if the point was to see who other board members were gonna be there to en- ensure that's coverage, if that was a priority for people, for me personally, I don't care. I mean, they're gonna go or not go. If you're there, great, I get to see you. If you're not, I'll see you at the next one, you know, but, um. That's not a priority for me, but if it is a priority for other, I mean, I think that needs to be the RSVP, not an RSVP VP tool. But a tracking of the RSVPs. If that's what we're trying to see.
And actually, Outlook will be both. It'll tell you who has said yes or no, or who has said maybe, or who has said no.
It does.
I, I really, yeah, I like it, just when Dee sends the invite, I'll just, I, one-on-one place, it's much easier.
Okay, stretch it, so we're on Outlook.
Cause we, so then I mean, we probably need to try to know how to see that everybody's going or not, if people, so that people can identify.
Yeah, no, that's like.
I think it's a little arrow that you can, you can see their agreement.
So if you have questions, I guess you should ask.
Yes.
If you're, if you're not sure how to see that functionality, feel free to ask when somebody comes.
Yeah.
Yes. I will come from Huntsville, we'll have a three-hour training, see who's coming to class.
Okay, so overwhelmingly, calendar invites versus spreadsheet?
Yep.
Heck, yes.
Very much.
One place, baby.
All right.
Glad we had this talk.
It is important, that's.
It is very important.
Everybody, yeah, okay. Efficient, so get ready to prioritize Outlook calendar invites.
And that's okay, and you can just say, nope, not gonna be there.
Yeah, that's what Trudy did last year and I loved it, I was like, nope, nope, no, yes, I love it.
And actually, when I do say yes to everything, and then go, I can't go to that.
You do have to make sure that you say send response, because if you don't say send response, then there's no indication to administration that you've responded.
Okay.
Yeah, cause here it says attending, no response, and you click on the little arrow, and it says yes, maybe, no, suggested.
Are you doing my job?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Cause y'all can't see Dee's face, she's like.
Yeah, poor Dee.
It's okay, it's a SOPA B, you should blame yourself. Yep.
Okay, so that was our goals from last year as boards, and I think we've talked about them, we debriefed them, we're good. Now, we're just gonna support with the goals that we will move forward with.
Don't be tearing up your daughter's place.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
It's like, I know, it's, it's a SOPA B, maybe it's a drink, I don't know. Okay, any other next steps on that? We're pretty good. Okay, so the last thing was, um, the board self-evaluation. So I have two documents. One, thanks to Brian for getting the CRSS person, um, of a board self-evaluation. And then, old disclosure.
He's Brian?
Yes.
But he's sitting in Larry's seat?
Yes. Thank you.
What is the question, Meg? Just make it for every of you elect.
Thank you.
Is that what you were trying to tell me earlier? That you were not Larry?
I don't know.
This is the CRSS.
Well, I'm gonna tell him he was sitting in this seat too.
And this is the CRSS.
That is CRSS, yes.
Okay, cause I, I don't see that anywhere on here.
This is the one that we did a couple of years ago, Randy, during, um.
That's what I thought, okay, so. Then, this is another one we have, it's like number five. I'm not sure that this is actually the TASB one, I don't think it is. Um, what we discovered is the version that we had from TASB is aligned to these five categories, which is the board, um. Like, it's not a TASB tool, the, the items in the version of it are tied directly to the standards for school boards. And it's the school board standard, and then you rate that standard. So this is not that, this is another one that administration wants to find. And then the one from TASB, I can't get to let, I think whenever we did it last year, it went to US, and then we printed it. And then we don't have an electronic copy of it. So the version from TASB I don't have.
Oh.
What I do have is all of our notes from last year, when we talked about the strengths and opportunities for growth based on what we've had. So the ver- I described the version from TASB, and then it has the five categories. And then it tells you where you rank overall, and then where you rank each of the sub items, which are the standards for boards. It's not a TASB items. It's directly aligned to standards.
Framework.
Framework, yes, the framework.
By the state board of experience.
So the plan is we need to do our self-evaluation between now and the, uh, retreat, in the, at the end of September. And we need to identify, do we wanna stick with the tool we already have, which I apologize for not having a copy of it. Or, um, if we wanna shift in some way. You have, you have this.
Are you gonna give us a, a copy of the notes from last year? Is that what you have? So that would help us break it down for TASB does, correct? She had a pot stack, I thought.
She just showed them.
And it's the first two pages, the rest of the document is all of our notes and our goals.
It seems to run out all, it runs out if it's me.
So what you're looking at on this, this version is the strengths and opportunities for growth. And the letters that you can see, like, the letter A, is one of the things that we saw as a string, was keeping the district to our best interest for children. That was a item. B, adopts and share visions is one of the items that we identified as a string. And then when you look at number two, you can see the I, J, and L, those are statements that are out of the framework for school boards. That we identified as strengths, and then opportunities for growth, right? So you can kinda see some of the statements, we don't have all of them. I can't email it, I can contact us.
Right.
My comment is that I think it would change this year, that we have no comparison to what we did last year.
That never led us to yet?
We have higher standards.
Yeah, it's just, that's your start is.
We need to know what's happening here, we need to prepare for the same tool. At least once. And if we decide to be more, we wanna change, then we have a good idea, but if we just totally reverse course, then not shares is pretty much.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. Even, even though I didn't participate last year in that process, there is value in the consistency.
Right, and we'll still get a copy to be able to see.
Right, right.
And then I think we can, you know, administration's working on like shared drive when we can have things. So that would be one of the things, so we should share drives, so that we have access to it, so that we can ensure it's not getting in the world, but we can like.
And I think if you redo the TASB, then you can have last year's and this year's results, so you can see how things have changed. I could be making that up, but I don't think I can.
So what is everybody, other people's opinion?
I agree with that, this two years in a row, the same thing.
And we ask everyone for data, right? We should hold ourselves with our data.
Yes, I think it's true.
Okay, so then I will request the TASB link, and then we'll have Dee send it out. I probably will wait until closer to the retreat, so that the data is closer to when we're gonna discuss it. Or if I need to fill that now, and then a lot of things are gonna happen in the next forty-five days, before we can talk about it. So I would say I'll, I'll give you a week in the middle of September, like, for retreat. So sorry, now there's, there's, it's around this three days. I have it, it's all there, but I, I have a documentation from last year. So about a week to do it, is that something? Okay, then I'll put that. Okay, um, anything else? I mean, uh, so, Kay, you have any other thoughts in general?
Lots of thoughts, well, it's actually a relative, you're welcome.
Okay, so then the homework is the board self-evaluation, which we wrapped this up, um, with our time. And with that, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at eight thirty-six.
Thank you, Kay.
So you'll call.
Bye, see you next week. Running football.
Bye, thank you, thank you, Dee.
Lindsay tonight, so he's got free time. Actually, they are, Fish, Fish are gone, but Fish has free time Saturday evening, so he might have free time.
Okay.